Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, October 7th, 2024. And we will begin the meeting as we always do with a brief invocation. And following that, we've got the Girl Scouts here from Troop 2091. And we're very honored to have them. And they have agreed to do the Pledge of Allegiance for us, or participate with us. So let us do the invocation, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we ask for a very special blessing on our nation, given what the weather forecasts are showing the last few hours, that specifically the state of Florida is maybe subject to one of the worst hurricanes it's ever experienced in the United States. The hurricane ratings are at the very top level right now, and they're very concerned about what's going to happen. So we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them, and that any injuries or very bad damage is somehow averted. But we just want to send a very special blessing to all those involved. Tonight, we ask for understanding and vision and agreements on the city council staff, as they go about the items of business before us on the agenda. And as always, we want to send a special blessing tonight from all those from our community and from our nation, who are serving in foreign soils in defense of the liberties of the United States of America and the rest of the world. And we just ask that a special blessing in some dangerous moments which are out there, that our people are protected and blessed. And finally, we just ask for understanding and vision and agreement and great ideas from the members of the city council as we act on the business before us. And we are thankful, knowing that in the hearts and minds of each of these men and women, they are here to do what is in the best interest of the city of Batavia and its people for the days ahead. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Okay, I'd ask the girls, if you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, girls. That was excellent. I really appreciate it.[1498.53][1498.53](Applause) Okay, moving to item three, and ask for a roll call, please. City clerk?
Barazza. Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peiper.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
Vogelsinger.
Here.
Eleven present, three absent.
We have the necessary quorum to conduct business. So I appreciate everybody making us know, in the case of several of you that made special efforts to get down here, and we appreciate that. Okay, item four is a reminder that if you're going to speak to us tonight, if you come up and use the podium, and specifically the microphone, because that is tuned into BATV. And if you don't use that microphone, if anybody's watching on TV, they're going to have a real hard time hearing what you're saying. So I appreciate everybody doing it if they're going to address the council. Moving to item five, are your items to remove, edited, or changed on the agenda? Do we have anything?
An add or an executive session.
We need a motion under the executive session to have a discussion on the purchase of real estate.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? You want to call the roll on that one?
Please. Barazza.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peiper.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman, absent.
Aye.
Malay, absent. Uer, absent. Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Coming back to Lehman.
Aye.
Eleven yes, no, no, three absent.
Motion's approved, and that will be near the end of the meeting in executive session. So moving then to any other items to remove, edited, or changed on the agenda? Chair, hurrying none. Moving to six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman, Beck?
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the committee of the whole minutes for July 30, 2024, and August 13, 2024, and September 10, 2024, and building reports for August 2024. And for approval, September 27, 2024 payroll in the amount of $1,035,206.03. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $6,513,184.62. The city council minutes for August 5, August 19, and September 16, 2024. Resolution 2024-124-R, authorization of an execution of an IGA with King County for animal control. Resolution 2024-126-R, approving task order number 32 with GZA Geo Environmental, Inc., for focus remediation services and sampling at 330 to 338 Webster Street. Resolution 2024-128-R, authorizing the approval of a separation and release agreement with the city of Batavia and Judith Weiss. 2023 fire pension municipal compliance report, the 2023 fire pension actuarial report, the 2024 fire pension tax levy request, 2023 police pension municipal compliance report, 2023 police pension actuarial report, 2024 police pension tax levy request. And for approval, the city council executive session minutes on January 17, 2023, for collective bargaining, March 6, 2023, for litigation, July 3, 2023, setting the price of land for sale, August 7, 2023, for land acquisition, sale or lease of real estate, and the purchase of real estate, September 18, 2023, for setting the price of land for sale, August 16, 2023, for land acquisition, and November 6, 2023, for litigation and the purchase of real estate. Your Honor, I'd move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion and second for the approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? Kirk called the roll.
Beck.
Aye.
Peiper.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Eleven yes, no, no, three absent.
Motion's approved. All right, moving to seven. All right, moving to seven, matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Does anybody this evening wish to address the city council? If so, we'd ask that you come up and use the podium. I guess we have none. All right, moving then to item eight, which is Oaths of Office for probationary full-time firefighter paramedics, Brian Borcucki, Alex Ballantyne, and Jacob Canada. Chief, you want to do the introductions on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I'm extremely excited to be here to present these three new firefighter candidates to you. For one reason, it's the first time that we'll be at full-time staff since I've been chief. We've been short in the Fire Department, up to four people, up to just recently. So this is exciting. Our crews have worked very hard and diligently to cover those vacancies with a lot of extra time and sacrifice from their families. So we are excited to be able to present three just fantastic candidates who have worked hard in their fire service career to earn these positions, who have gone through a testing process, a written process, and interviews with our Police and Fire Commission, and have been selected among a number of other candidates. We have literally gone through over 100 candidates that had to test a second time to provide these candidates to you, and they're all local candidates, which really excites me. A couple of them having served previously in the Batavia Fire Department, and one of them serving with one of our neighboring fire departments for several years. So this is truly an exciting time. I'm glad to be able to present them to you and get them sworn in so that they can have their careers here at the Batavia Fire Department, like many of our other constituents, and as I've been honored to do so also. So appreciate your time and consideration, and I'll ask Brian Borcucki to step forward first. Brian, if you come on down, you have your family, are you good? That's right, nervous. Come on down. I promised Brian I wouldn't embarrass you, and will embarrass him. It's just part of being welcomed into the Batavia family.
Brian, we need to get you up here in the center of the room.
The mayor's going to introduce you, and then we'll allow you to say a few words. Brian comes to us from the South Algen Fire Department, where he served about five, almost six years.
Six and a half.
Okay, six and a half. Time flies when you're having fun. So Brian, being with one of our neighboring departments and always mutualizes us, is familiar with the area, and we're really excited to have Brian come on board with us. So now you have to raise and promise.
Would you like to put your family behind you? They'd all be on TV there.
Sure.
Surround him.
Camera's trying to surround him.
Above us there.
Okay. Okay, if you raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Brian Borcucki.
Having been appointed.
Have been appointed.
To the position of probationary full-time firefighter.
To the position of probationary full-time firefighter.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
The counties of Kane and DuPage.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of probationary full-time firefighter paramedic.
Of position of full-time firefighter paramedic.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
She gets to pin your badge. Now, hopefully you've been nice to her lately. There's two ways to pin it, one with blood, one without. I know. There you go. You did perfect. Did you want to say a few things or not? There you go.
Just like to say thank you to everyone giving me this amazing opportunity to be here with all you. I promise I'm going to do the absolute best I can to be the best firefighter paramedic with the city of Batavia. Thank you so much.
All right, Jake Canada. Jacob. Come on down, and your family. Come on in. You got a lot of people. You all get to fill in this area up here.
We've got enough room.
You up front, and all your families behind you. We get everybody on the camera here.
Everybody, come on up. Really happy to introduce Jake, who's been with us before. Jake started with us as an explorer, worked up through paid-on-call ranks, earned not only his firefighter certifications, but he did his paramedic training here at the Batavia Fire Department, and was able to get a full-time position with a neighboring fire department. But Jake has always wanted to return here to Batavia, understood the importance of our family and our community here at the Batavia Fire Department, and we can't be more excited than to have Jake back. So we're glad he returned to us, and we're going to get him sworn in before he changes any minds or anything.
If you raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Jacob Canada.
Having been appointed.
Have been appointed.
To the position of probationary full-time firefighter.
To the position of probationary full-time firefighter.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of probationary full-time firefighter paramedic.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of full-time probationary firefighter paramedic.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Matt? Welcome back.
Oh, no. Just want to say thank you to everybody that came out tonight and has supported me throughout this journey. I got a great opportunity in Shurigrove, and I'm happy to be back here in Batavia.
Congratulations. Welcome back.
Thank you for coming up. One more, right. Not enough. We'll be asking for more, just to highlight there, council as we're moving down. Alex Ballantyne. Alex Ballantyne doesn't come far, since Alex is one of our current paid-on-calls. So for... You got it. Hold the sticker. There you go. Alex also started as a explorer with us back in high school, worked his way up through paid-on-call firefighters, currently a paid-on-call firefighter with us, earned all of his firefighter certifications through us and paramedics with us. And Alex took a brief, not even a leave, just took some time to join the United States Marine Corps. He currently is a reserve for the United States Marine Corps, and we're really excited to have him with us at this point in time. You have family to... Come on down. They're just waiting for you.
If you raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Alex Ballantyne.
Having been appointed.
Have been appointed.
To the position of probationary full-time firefighter.
Position of probation full-time firefighter.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of probationary firefighter paramedic.
As probationary firefighter paramedic.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Nicely done. Did you learn that at the Marine Corps or something? It's in there. Yeah, it's still blood. There we go.
I want to say thank you to everyone here, the citizens of Batavia, all the fine gentlemen in the back who's trained me and raised me to this point in my fire career. I'm excited to continue. Thank you.
All right, thank you. None of you guys leave till you sign the paperwork. See me before you leave. That is an... We'll take a timeout. As exciting as the chamber's report is, and the city administrator, she's going to give you... For like the Google tab, a Google tab?
Okay, we're going to move to item number nine, which is the Batavia Chamber of Commerce. And we're delighted to have the president and CEO with us. She does an excellent job of filling us in on what the chamber's doing. So Margaret?
Thank you, ma'am. Excellent. I just wanted to make sure we were all set up. Hey, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. I wanted to thank you for your partnership. We appreciate the collaboration with everything between the chamber and the city of Batavia. I'm excited to welcome several new businesses that have joined the Batavia Chamber this month. Please help me extend a warm welcome to First American Bank, Oasis Integrative Medicine, Take Five Oil Change, Slick City Action Park, North Aurora, and ADC Technologies. Again, if you want more information about these businesses, I encourage you to go to the business directory on the Batavia Chamber's website. I'm thrilled to announce that this year's recipient of two prestigious Chamber Awards, Jason Stoffel, the owner of Enticing Cuisine, was named the 2024 Donna De La Sase Award winner, recognizing him as our Chamber Member of the Year. Also, Patty Lackman with the League of Women Voters, Kane County, central Kane County it is. She was honored with the Georgine Couth Odweire Chamber Ambassador of the Year Award for her outstanding contribution to the chamber. Patty Lackman, at our Chamber Cheers event last Thursday at Grainology, did a wonderful job presenting how important it is for all of us to show up at ribbon-cutting ceremonies, and how impactful that is on our business owners. That's one of the reasons that Patty was... That kind of passion is why Patty was selected as the Ambassador of the Year. She's terrific. On another exciting note, I wanted to say nominations are now open for the 2024 Batavia Citizen of the Year Award. This honor recognizes an individual who exemplifies selflessness and dedication through service to the Batavia community. Do you know someone that is deserving? Can you think of someone? If so, please write a nomination letter and submit it to the chamber. You could email it to me at margaret@bataviacamber.org, or drop it in the mail to 106 Wes Wilson at the Batavia Chamber. They're due by Friday, October... I'm sorry, November 8. To give you a sense of the tradition, the last five winners have been Dave and Marge Brown in 2024... I'm sorry, 2023, John Dillon in 2022, Dan Hoefler in 2021, Bob Hanson in 2020, and Dan Phillips in 2019. Such an esteemed group to be a part of. Of course, Mayor Shulkey's one of those members, too. Now, I'd like to share some of the Chamber's upcoming events. I encourage you to join us. On Tuesday, October 8, that's tomorrow, at 11:30 a.m., we have a Batavia Women in Business Luncheon. We are featuring Jim Cordy, the artistic director of the Paramount's Broadway Series. He'll be our speaker. On Wednesday, October 9, we have our Morning Networking Coffee and Commerce. That will be at Harth and Hammer at 8 a.m. On Tuesday, October 15, we have our Batavia Business Exchange. They're a referral group. They're hosting an open house at BMO Bank to see if a referral group is for you. Just come, no registration needed. That's at 7:30 a.m. On Wednesday, October 16, in the evening at 4:30, we have our Evening Networking at Thorabella's, and we're highlighting Tri-City Health Partnership as our spotlight charity. On Friday, October 18, at 8 a.m., we have our Chamber Member 101, so that members learn how to maximize their benefits with the Batavia Chamber. On Monday, October 21, we have a ribbon-cutting for Lucky Joe's, formerly Gammon Coach House. That will be at 4:30. Come join us for that. That'll be a fun one. Thursday, October 24, is our Fall Into Business Multi-Chamber Networking Event at Olivia Country Club, Villa Olivia Country Club. Tuesday, October 29, is a webinar that we call Know the Difference: Social Media Versus Social Marketing. You can get the registration link on our website. That will be 11:30, Tuesday, October 29. And finally, this month, Wednesday, October 30, we have our Multi-Chamber Not-for-Profit Quarterly Idea Exchange. It's an educational seminar in person. This time, we will have Ellen Huxtable speak on maximizing your marketing impact. That's for not-for-profits only. So for any more details on any of those events, please go to our website, bataviacamber.org, and you could always text the chamber at 478CHAMBER. Before I introduce my guest, does anybody have any questions for me? Great.
She's the lady with all the answers.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to, before I bring my guest up here, play an Ole video that we had awarded at our Inspire event last April.
Hi, I'm Jason. Welcome to Grainology. I think we both individually had the idea. The more and more we talked and started brewing together and realized again how well we worked together, it just made sense.
Batavia might be a little slow to the game versus St. Charles and Jema, but I think they're coming with better things. That's exactly why we wanted to be here. Over the last several decades, I was able to make some good partnerships with some small craft distilleries, and that's really how we have old product at the beginning of our journey here at Grainology.
The one thing that was always important to me from a business plan perspective was keeping our alcohol not at zero, but a little bit lower than a lot of the breweries that we have up and down the Fox River, especially because of the Fox River Trail and very active lifestyle out in this area. The building was built in 1902. It was originally the foundry building for US Wind Engine and Pump, or the windmill factories here in Batavia. We love the history of the building. You know, you'll kind of walk around and see some tracks in the floor. Michael and I spent a lot of long, long days here during build-out, and I think we paid respects to the men and women that have worked their tails off in this building before we did. Like to think that we made all of those people that put their own blood, sweat, and tears into this building proud because we did the same. It's been important from the time that we started putting pen to paper on the business plan with making sure that we were not in the community, but a part of it.
We really try to cater to the community, provide opportunities for different libations, and, you know, make it a fun place to be. From the team at Grainology, we just want to say thank you for the Ole Award.
So, yeah, we were so happy to be able to give Grainology that award for the renovations for what they did at their space. We're really lucky to have them in Batavia. Like I said, they hosted our Chamber Cheers the other night, which was fabulous. Michael Reed, the owner, is here with us to talk about it. I do want to ask you to mark your calendars for Blackout Wednesday. Wednesday, November 27, we're doing a one-year ribbon-cutting anniversary celebration at 2 o'clock at their space. Come on up, Mike.
It's four pages, but it's, you know, large print. Good evening, Mayor Shulkey, City Administrator Newman, and our city council members. My name is Michael Reed. I'm one of the owners of Grainology Brews Dillery. Thank you, Margaret, for the opportunity to speak this evening. On behalf of Grainology staff and our shareholders, I would also like to thank the whole community for their continued support in our endeavor. I'd also recognize a list. I'm going to start with Freddie Martinez of Fernando Street Kitchen. I'm gonna start with Freddie Martinez of Fernando Street Kitchen, Zimmy and Bee from Windmill Grill, Frank, Diane, Oliver, Steve, and staff at Sturdy Shelter, the Batavia Chamber Commerce, Batavia Main Street, Waveform LLC, Batavia Enterprises, Building 001, the Batavia Boosters, and countless others that have helped us through our first year in our adventure. It's been a little over a year since I stood at this podium to share our plans for Grainology. Excuse me. And we love being part of the Southwest Corridor in downtown Batavia. We've been open just over 10 months and look forward to celebrating our one-year anniversary with our patrons and friends during Thanksgiving week. On November 27th, thanks for the lead-in there, Margaret, Blackout Wednesday. We're gonna have some great music and food to accompany our excellent products. I want to recognize and thank, once again, the grant monies that have been provided by the city. They were significant in getting our doors open with ADA improvements to the building, both at the front and the rear, that hopefully we'll never have to use for Mr. Fire Chief. It's been a challenge through this year. June 22nd, we had an event, is what I like to call it, and the city did help us out there in recovery. Put a little bit of financial strain on, but very grateful and thank you, once again, for that grant money. We'll also be submitting an application soon for another grant, and that's for signage, to support our location there in the Southwest Corridor. It's not so easy to find the street sign for Flint Streets on a parking lot instead of a street. Get a lot of traffic through there at significant speeds. We try to keep things pretty safe there. And Google and Yahoo Maps haven't figured it out yet, so you'll see that coming. If you haven't been to our establishment lately, we slowly continue to make progress on each portion of our business plan. We've been able to offset some of the unrealized investment capital by eliminating our kitchen from our initial build-out plans, but have instead partnered with Batavia Businesses to be able to have food all the time for our guests, to accompany some of the fine food trucks that we have come in and food pop-ups. So just trying to keep that in the community and help everyone succeed. As artisans, our craft is one we love, but we also love to support other artisans regardless of the medium that they choose to use. We continue our monthly rotation of artwork in our indoor fencing area to share with the community all the talent that exists locally and in the region. With assistance from Waveform LLC, we've been able to build an affordable stage with in-house lighting and a P.A. system to support all sorts of talented individuals. And we're very thankful for those types of relationships and partnerships with other businesses in the community. Through careful movement of equipment outdoors, we've been able to execute our first distillations after many setbacks, such as fire-rated windows. We continue to be challenged in acquiring the appropriate fire glass for those windows that'll allow us to visually share our distillery operations, equipment with all of our patrons, as well as meet the necessary life safety requirements. So if anyone is listening this evening that has some experience, connection, or even their own business in the area of fire windows, don't hesitate to call us because we're looking for a new partner. In closing, the first year has flown by, and I'm likely missing several thank-yous and recognitions to help us get to where we are right now. We are humbled and grateful to be part of this city and the community. We continue to strive at being the best at what we do and bring the best products we can to you all, and look forward to opportunities for the future in Batavia. So thank you very much.
While you're up here, I'd like to just thank you, too, for the partnership that you had with Main Street to bring the farmer's market in to your business over the winter because I think that really worked out very well, the times that I've visited and the information that I've had of how well that went there. So I hope it's a good thing for you, and I hope it continues.
Thank you very much. I mean, it was... We feel lucky to have been able to do that. And just the community getting in there and doing their thing, having time to sit and shop, or sit and have some food, or whatever they want to do. It's easy to get to, lots of parking, easy access for anyone. So it's been great, and we love doing it. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You're done, Margaret, then?
Yes, I have. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, going then to 10, the Administrator's Report. Laura?
First, I'd like to share some good news. Thanks to Max working with HUD's website for getting reimbursement under our grants. We have made it through the process and been approved for the reimbursement of $2 million for the purchase of 916 First Street. So that was a big milestone for us. The Food Pantry and Clothes Closet are working with an architect right now, who is nearly completed with plans for some renovations on the inside and also exterior of the building. And so their current lease is through September of next year, and we think that will afford us plenty of time to complete that project and get them moved into their new forever home. The Communications Department officially launched the Street Stories with the Mayor video series. If you visit bataviaill.gov/streetstories, there are about 10 street stories there, and you can learn about things like Donovan Bridge and Sager Way and the fantastic people who are behind the namings of these things in our community. Mayor shared quite a few stories about those, and they're all really interesting. We also have a series of videos that we are going to publish very soon explaining the road diet and how to drive along the new configurations. I'm in some of them, as well as Sergeant Langston. And then also, because we like her to be in all of our videos these days, Officer Web and River, our new comfort dog puppy at this point, who is going through her training. So she has limited public engagements at this time, but she is so cute, and we enjoy sharing her with our community. Final engineering has been completed and approved by IDOT for the Safe Routes to School Program for Republic, Maple Blaine, and Webster. The project will be let out for bid in January and then constructed next summer. Storm and sanitary sewer lining is ongoing. You might see contractors out there working near manholes, and you'll see smoke coming out of those manholes. It's actually steam because hot water is used to expand and cure the sewer liners. So it is nothing hazardous, but it looks ominous when you see the steam coming out of those manholes. And then also, the traffic signals at the Wilson and Prairie intersection are scheduled for installation in November. And in the meantime, that intersection is gonna remain a four-way stop. And I wanted to conclude today with a message that we always talk about this time of year, and it's to please, when you're, you know, maybe taking your garbage out and you're near the curbs, close to your property, to check out those storm sewer grates and make sure that they aren't all clogged up with, you know, leaves and sticks and such because, you know, when that happens and we get a big rain, then it doesn't let the storm water get down into those drains and taken away like it should. So we really appreciate the public's help and assistance with recognizing which of those grates might be covered. And I'll be back this winter to talk the same thing about the fire hydrants and if the snow gets very high, to try to clear those away. So our fire department, when they come on scene, it's easy for them to identify where our hydrants are. That's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me today.
Questions? Thank you. All right, moving to item 11, Other Business. Anybody in the council or anything you want to bring up? All right, the Mayor's Report. I'm gonna do something here that I think I'm gonna start, and that's I'm gonna tell a Batavia story. It's true stuff that's happened. But this one I found very intriguing. I had a guy come down here last Thursday, I guess it was, and he walked in and asked to see me. And I was here, so I came down the stairs, and he came running over, and he says, "I just want to tell you how happy I am that I moved to your town." And he says, "My son and his wife..." My son got transferred. We were in suburban Cleveland, and my son got transferred to Chicago. So they came over here and ended up in Batavia, and they told me that they had found this wonderful town. And it was a real town, and it wasn't any make-believe place, and it wasn't phony. And this was really like old-time small towns in America were supposed to be. And I saw him, I said, "I can't believe that." Well, the next thing that happened was his son came back to him and said, "Why don't you come over and stay with me for a few weeks and see what this town's all about? And bring the dog." So he came last, he said, last February, March, and he was here for the night of the Brotherhood banquet over at the church on Hart Road, the Sherman Lutheran. And he said he was absolutely blown away by the event, that you had all these men from all these churches in Batavia, Catholic, Protestants, black, white, Hindu, all races, religions, colors, and creeds, all sat down together, all had a breakfast or dinner, prayed to the same God, and then people got up and told some nice things about the town and how good it was. And he just couldn't believe that all the churches in this town could get together and have a banquet together. And I said, "Well, it's something that we're pretty proud of." And so then he says, "But I found out," he says, "I'm after the banquet. I made the motion I was gonna move to Batavia myself. So my wife and I moved over here. And so we no sooner got here, and we have our favorite dog we brought with us, and we no sooner got here than the dog ran away on us. And I was sick to death that I was losing my dog. Well, lo and behold, three people down, three houses behind me down the block saw the dog wandering around and didn't know if they had seen him, so they brought him in the house and were feeding him and taking care of him. And the dog now walks down there and sees those people because he appreciates how nice they were to him." So he says, "You just don't find this in any other place." But he says, "The breaking test for me was about six weeks ago, my wife had a medical incident. So I got a little nervous, so I 911'd it. And right away, first came the fire ambulance, then came the fire truck, and then they brought a squad, and then the police came. I had so many people in uniform in my front door that I was blown away because my wife's a little bit on the heavy side, and we needed to get some bodies behind her to get her on the stretcher. They took her up to Delnor Hospital. They did a fabulous job, and she was back out of the hospital in two days." And he says, "I just can't believe everything that's happened to me in this town." And he says, "I never even envisioned that any of this stuff would happen." But he says, "I was so, so pleased about what had happened." But he says, "The ultimate story was," and Laura just mentioned it, "They've gotten me doing this thing about the Batavia street names, and we go on and talk about where this name came from and whatever have you." So out in the far west side of our community, out in the west side, we've got a street out there called Alborowski. And I've had people who live on it call and complain that they think the name was too long and too hard to spell and too hard to pronounce. And why did we have to name that street that way? So I told them, I said, "Well, that street's got a very special meaning in Batavia because it's named after the gentleman who was the police chief here in 1940. And he got himself in a high-speed police chase in a police car, and he goes out chasing a car out east Wilson Street before Fermilab was there, long before Fermilab was there. And there was no police radio in the car in 1940, so he couldn't call and say what was happening. And he got out near McChesney Road and Wilson Street, and something happened. He lost control of the car, and the police car went off and hit a tree, and he got killed. And he was the first Batavia police officer ever to be killed in duty." Now, we've had another one, and he also got killed in a squad car, and we don't know what happened. He got killed down by the Lincoln Inn on South Batavia Avenue. But we've had two die, unfortunately, but both of them were in car accidents. But in the Alborowski story, this is what really got the... I found out he was a veteran. The Alborowski said a second part to it. Mr. Chief Alborowski had a son, Severin, and Severin joined the U.S. Navy right after his father got killed. He went into the U.S. Navy and went through all the training, and he was on the USS Arizona in Pearl Harbor on December 7, 1941, when the Japanese attacked it. And if you go to Pearl Harbor today, and you want to go out to the Arizona, they have... I've done this. You get on a little boat, and you go out, and they have a monument out on top of the Arizona, and you could look down and see the ship below you. And there's 1,177 names on this monument of all the sailors that were killed that day. And they got them identified alphabetically. So ALB, Alborowski, is right up there, almost at the top of the list on the USS Arizona. So I told that story in this thing that we're doing, and this guy came down, and the last thing, he started talking about this, and he got tears in his eyes. And I'm thinking, you know, this happened in 1940. This is, you know, 85 years ago. But he says, "There's just so much meaning in this town. There's so much that you can really hold on to that really has some true belief and some life lesson associated with it, and it really speaks to what Batavia's all about. And there's so many special people here that watch over each other, get in disagreements, but then they get back together because they miss each other." And he says, "I've already experienced all that in this town." He says, "Where I lived before, I never saw any of this. But, boy, this place is a place where you come together and you really understand and get to know each other, and it really makes your life a better place." So he said, "I feel real good that I'm gonna live in this place to the day I die because this is a very special place on the face of the earth." So I just thought you guys should hear that, that that's the type of stuff that's said about our town. And there's not a lot of towns, I don't think, that that story's can be said, but we got them right here, so... Okay, I guess we need then a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Kirk, call the roll.
Nancy?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Peeper?
Hi.
Malone?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Sulfah?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
Lehman?
Hi.
Ayazi?
Hi.
Yu-Sarone?
Hi.
Yu-Sarone.
Yu-Sarone. I hear that a lot.
Sorry. Sarone. Vogelsinger?
Here. Aye.
11 yes, no, no, 3 absent.
Motion's approved.